If you have any questions, please come up and speak into that microphone so everyone else in the pavilion can hear the question that you're asking the secretary. It's always interesting for me to introduce this gentleman because we have been friends for a very long time. Tom Vilsec basically calls Mount Pleasant his home. I think I might as well call Mount Pleasant my hometown. We've both been here a long time. But Tom Vilsec was a Mount Pleasant attorney. In fact, he was attorney for Midwest Old Threshers. He then went on to be the mayor of Mount Pleasant, governor of Iowa, and of course now is the secretary of agriculture. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a nice welcome to the secretary of agriculture, Tom Vilsec.
Thank you. No, no. Thank you. Thank you. You know, you never know what can happen after you become associated with Old Threshers. You know, mayor, state senator, governor, secretary of agriculture, I think it's directly related to my work here at Old Threshers. So it's great to be back, great to be back home and appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. We actually did this last year, I think, and maybe we can make it an annual event because there's no greater place to talk about agriculture than right here. It celebrates the history and the past of agriculture and gives me an opportunity to talk a little bit about the future as well. I do want to acknowledge John Whitaker who's with us today. John is the state director of our FSA offices throughout the state of Iowa, a good friend, a former state representative. And he's here and obviously if there are any really, really hard questions, John will be here afterwards to answer them. I want to just take a few minutes of your time to talk a little bit about the state of agriculture and then talk about a couple of challenges that are facing agriculture in the United States today. I just got back from a trip to Brazil where I had an opportunity to sort of tour the situation down there. You know, they're now the number one producer of soybeans in the world, Brazilians. They obviously are growing a lot of corn, they grow a lot of sugarcane, they have a very diverse agriculture. And yet 40% of the land that they have available for agricultural production is not in use today. And as they get more productive, as they get more of that land in production, they're obviously going to be a significant force in agriculture. So we've got to keep an eye on the competition. That's why I'm pleased to say that in the last five years, we've actually seen record farm income. And we just announced this week, early this week, that 2013 will be yet another record year of farm income in the United States. That's pretty extraordinary given the drought that we experienced last year. And I think it speaks to the amazing resilience and productivity of American agriculture that in the worst drought in 80 years, we still had the fifth largest corn crop we've ever had. So I think it's important for us to continue to invest in the technology and the machinery that we celebrate here to be able to continue to be productive. Two reasons why we have become more productive and more, with more income is an expansion of agricultural exports. Despite Brazil's great productivity, we still in the United States are the number one exporting country in the world in terms of agricultural production. And we set a record again this year for agricultural exports to other countries. And we have a trade surplus in terms of agricultural products. We actually sell a lot more to the rest of the world than we buy. Because we in this country, because of our great farmers, experience a thing called food security, meaning that our farmers are capable of producing everything we need to feed ourselves. And that's something that oftentimes Americans take for granted and shouldn't, because very, very few countries in the world actually are capable of producing all the food that their people need to feed themselves and then have more to export to other countries. That agricultural exports also help to support jobs here at home. Nearly a million jobs are connected to agricultural exports. And that's one of the reasons why one out of every 12 jobs in the American economy is connected to agriculture. So even though we went through a difficult recession, over the last several years, we're recovering from it, agriculture's success has made that recession not quite as severe as it might otherwise be. Farmers in this country are also very much engaged in conservation. And I'm proud to say that in the last five years, we've had a record investment and record involvement in conservation practices throughout the United States. More acres enrolled in conservation programs in a voluntary way than ever before. And we're working with states to work with them to encourage more conservation. And I think you're going to see, hopefully from the state of Iowa, upcoming announcements relative to more commitment to conservation. We've done some work in the Midwest where we're seeing a significant increase. So that's positive news and it obviously generates additional income for farm families. And we've also seen a record expansion of local and regional food systems, farmer's market, community-supported agriculture, some of which you celebrate here in the Mount Pleasant area, is helping to create new income opportunities for smaller-sized operations, which gives us a chance to encourage younger people to get in the farming business without the necessity of inheriting a farm or having to spend a great deal of money to get started. And it's one of the reasons why John Whitaker suggested, and we listened to him, about the need for us to develop programs to help those beginning farmers. And one of them was the microloan program that FSA sponsors. It's up to $35,000, a seven-year loan. It can be for a wide variety of purposes. The interest rate is very competitive. It's less than 2%, isn't it, John?
One and a quarter percent interest.
So it's a pretty doggone good deal. And also, we're looking at ways in which crop insurance can be adjusted to help beginning farmers to make it a little bit easier for folks to get started. So this conservation movement, this local and regional food system movement, and finally the bio-based economy. While there is no question that the oil industry is very interested in attacking the ethanol production industry in this country, and I believe they will not be successful in eliminating the renewable fuel standard, we are now beginning to branch out how we use agricultural products. I was sharing with some fellows just before I came here this morning that we actually are now using corn to produce the plastic for water bottles. Coca-Cola produces 10 billion of these bottles a year, and many of them are now being produced from corn cobs. We're taking grasses that are on non-productive land and converting it into plastics and chemicals. A wide variety of products now in the federal government, there are over 10,000 products that are made that are bio-based that we are giving preferences to in purchasing. So we create new market opportunities for agricultural surplus or agricultural waste product. We're even using, in Ohio, we're even using hog manure to create an asphalt that is actually weathering the Ohio winters more effectively than traditional asphalt. So there are just unlimited opportunities here for American agriculture to continue to grow and expand. It needs two things to happen for this momentum of record income and record exports and record conservation and record expansion of new opportunities to continue. It needs the passage of a five-year farm bill. I like to refer to it as a food, farm, and jobs bill. That passage of that bill will provide security and certainty about what the programs are going to be. The Senate passed their version of a farm bill in a very comprehensive way with a very strong bipartisan vote. The House passed a bill that included some, but not all, of the provisions. And I know that some folks are suggesting that maybe the best thing to do would be to separate the nutrition programs from the farm programs. The problem with that is that it's very difficult to get the votes in Congress because many legislators, many members of Congress, do not represent districts that are particularly rural or agricultural in nature. The rural populations of this country are now at 16% of America's population. It's the lowest percentage in the history of the country. We just for the first time experienced an actual population loss in small towns like Mount Pleasant across the United States. And so there are fewer and fewer members of Congress who understand agriculture. And so it's going to be important for us to continue to shape bills in a way that will attract enough political support to get the farm programs through the process. Because so few members of Congress fully understand what these farm programs actually mean and do and why we need them. But I'm hopeful that when the House comes back into session, they'll get working on a nutrition bill and then we'll have a conference committee and hopefully over the course of the next several weeks, we'll get something worked out. If we don't, there are two serious problems. Number one, I mentioned my trip to Brazil. Brazil took the United States to court based on the way in which we support our cotton industry. And we lost that court decision in the World Trade Organization. And as a result of that, Brazil now has the right on October 1st to begin assessing retaliatory tariffs against American agricultural products and products of all kinds, to the tune of up to maybe $850 million a year in retaliation. That's going to impact and affect agriculture. It's going to impact and affect jobs in America. It can be prevented if we have a farm bill that basically addresses a new way of supporting our cotton industry. The second problem is that if we don't get something done very soon, then permanent agricultural law comes into play. And that will basically compel and force me as the secretary of agriculture to begin buying commodities at very high prices. The first one to go will probably be the milk. The federal government will be purchasing milk at very high costs to the federal government. It will create shortages in grocery stores and that will drive up the cost of milk to ordinary consumers. That doesn't have to happen. We don't need a permanent law to go into effect. All we need is for Congress to get its work done in getting a five-year bill done. The second issue that really impacts agriculture, not so much in the Midwest unless you're a dairy producer, but certainly if you're growing specialty crops, is the issue of labor. We have a labor shortage in America today in agriculture. And the sad reality is that producers across the country are now making one of three decisions. Some producers are actually deciding not to harvest all that they have capable and all that they've grown. They actually are leaving crops to rot, they're leaving them on the trees and in the fields. They're not picking them because they simply don't have enough people to do that. The second decision some are making is that they're actually scaling back production because they're not convinced they have enough folks to work. So they're basically planting less. And then the third decision that unfortunately tragically is happening in some parts of the country is producers, large-scale producers, are moving production outside of the United States to other countries. About 80,000 acres in California is no longer being farmed, it's actually being farmed in Mexico. And if we continue to have this labor shortage, we're going to continue to see a contraction of opportunity. And we just did a study that showed in Iowa, it could impact and affect up to $10 million of annual opportunity in the state of Iowa and could help to create 1,000 jobs if we had a decent and system of ensuring workers in agriculture. And one way to do that is by having comprehensive immigration reform that essentially allows those who are in this country and have been in for a while to work their way to citizenship by paying fines and penalties and working their way to a process 10, 15 years down the road of being legitimately here, bringing them out of the shadows. And if we do that, not only do we help agriculture, but we also help to reduce the deficit and shore up social security. Because we've got people paying their fair share of taxes and doing what they're supposed to do. So this is, these are two challenges that I think agriculture faces. There are 530 organizations that have been supportive of action on the farm bill. There are a wide variety of ag interests, Farm Bureau, the National Farmers Union, the commodity groups, the Western Growers Association, who have all basically been supportive of comprehensive immigration reform. If we don't get those two things done, then this momentum that we've seen in agriculture will be impacted and I think slowed down. And that's unfortunate for small towns, for festivals like this, and reunions like this, and for rural America. But we're going to continue to work hard at USDA. We're going to continue to articulate the need for a farm bill and immigration reform. We're going to continue to use the resources we have to try to grow economic opportunity. We're engaged in trade discussions now in Southeast Asia and in Europe to try to expand trading markets for agricultural goods. So we are focused on a brighter and better future for agriculture. So with that, let me stop. And usually in audiences like this, I give you two choices. You can either start asking questions or I've got about a 45-minute speech that's pretty boring I could give. So it's really up to you. You can ask questions or I'll start getting that 45-minute speech. I'll give you like 30 seconds to decide. Just takes one brave soul to get up there and ask a question. And we'll spend the rest of the time we have here this afternoon, this morning, answering those questions. All right. A brave soul.
All right. Okay, we're good. I'm from Mount Pleasant too. I come from a border.
I'm just going to have to put up with that.
Always, yes. Not like I'm not used to it. Okay, anyway. So I'm a student at Iowa State in Agriculture, and I'm just curious if our farm heritage and keeping our middle farmers employed, keeping them on their farms is so important, why are they making inheritance laws so difficult for kids to stay on their own parks? Why should I have to pay for something again that my grandparents and my father paid for all their life?
Fair enough. A couple of things. First of all, you know, I think it's important to understand that there are tax laws that make it very, very unlikely that the middle-sized operations that you're talking about will actually be subjected to a state tax. And in Iowa, the inheritance tax, I think, has been eliminated among family members. So in Iowa, you don't have a state inheritance tax that you pay, and you have to have a pretty large operation before the federal government kicks in. And even before that, there are ways in which you can value your farm that's different than what's happening today. You know, farmland is going up in value, but that isn't necessarily how you would value it for estate tax purposes. There's a thing called special use valuation that actually takes a look more closely at the income production capacity of the farm as opposed to what your neighbor may be willing to pay at an auction. And that helps to lower the value of that farm significantly. Then the government comes in and says, you get an exemption up to so many millions of dollars of value. And on top of that, if by chance you do owe a state tax, there is an opportunity for you to pay that tax over a period of, I think, 15 years at a very low interest rate. So the way that the laws are currently structured, about 97% and 98% of all farms are not subject to inheritance tax, estate tax. Very, very small percentage of folks actually end up having to pay that. So I think the way the rules are set, I think they've attempted to strike an appropriate balance. And I think that there are also opportunities during and while someone is alive to create ways in which ownership can be divested through gifts and through a variety of other legal mechanisms to reduce the possibility of an estate tax. So if that is a concern and it needs to be, obviously you need to take a look at maybe things that could be done now in your family that makes it likely, less likely that you're going to have that situation. Good question. Thank you for starting it. You saved these people from at least, now it's a 43-minute.
Good morning. My name is Bob Wurda from Webster City, Iowa, and I'd like to know what would happen to the farmer if all government subsidies were eliminated?
Okay, that's a great question. Well, you travel a long way from Webster City. Thanks for coming down to the Union. Well, let's talk, let's first of all talk about what those subsidies are. And there are a variety of different ways in which the government provides help. Yesterday, I authorized the purchase of $50 million of chicken by the United States government. There is a great desire on the part of consumers here and abroad for white meat of chicken, but there is less demand for dark meat. And it's not particularly an export opportunity. Many of our export customers for chicken like the organs as opposed to the thigh or the leg meat. So there's an abundance or surplus of this meat available, which is making it harder for poultry producers to be able to make a decent living. So the government comes in and basically purchases that surplus and then uses it for food banks or for school meal programs. So that's one subsidy in a way that helps the market, but it also keeps farmers in business. Without that capacity, we would probably see a lot of producers not be able to make it because from time to time, we have to buy tomatoes, or we have to buy grapes, or we have to buy cherries, or we have to buy pork, or we have to buy poultry, or beef, almost every year. And usually it's several hundred, almost a billion dollars in purchases a year. So that's one type. So I think that would be very harmful if that flexibility were taken away. The second subsidy is in the form of research that the United States Department of Agriculture funds. You know, we're now mapping the genome of corn, soybeans, dairy cows. That information's going to give us the ability to do a much better job of preventing diseases or dealing with diseases and pests. We spend another couple billion dollars a year on a wide variety of agricultural research, both internally with our ARS folks and externally through grants to Iowa State University that help ag students hopefully learn more about agriculture. You know, that's a really important thing that we do, that if we didn't do it, I'm not sure anybody necessarily would or wouldn't do it at the level. And that would impact and direct not only the livelihood of farmers, but the impact in the ability of this country to produce everything it needs to feed itself. And as we see the world population continue to grow and food production having the increase in the lifetime of this young lady who asked the first question, by 70%, that's going to take more innovation in agriculture in the next 40 years than has taken place in the preceding 10,000 years. You take a look at all these machines and all this innovation that surrounds us that we celebrate, and you look at the machines of today and how much advancements have been made, think about all that having occurred in a 100-year period, we have to do that and substantially more in the next 40 years. So we need research. So that's the second thing which I think would be very harmful if we took that away. I'm getting to where you actually want me to get to, but I think it's important for people to understand there's a broad array of ways in which we help. The third way that we help is with crop insurance. Last year, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we paid out over $17 billion in crop losses because of this drought. I don't think very many Americans fully understand how much money it takes to put a crop in the ground. If you've got any decent-sized operation, it doesn't take much of a stretch to have as much as a half a million dollars or more literally outlaid before you sell a single kernel or a single bean. If you have, if you didn't have crop insurance and Mother Nature came along and you were a perfect farmer, you did everything, you did everything right. You know, if you were a perfect baseball player and every time you came up to bat, you got a base hit, you would, I mean, I don't know how much money you'd make. But if you're a farmer, you can do everything perfectly and Mother Nature can come along and say, you know what? Nice try. You're not going to have a crop at all. When that happens, if you laid out a half a million dollars or a million bucks and a banker's provided that credit to you and you can't pay them back, you might be able to hold them off for a year. But that second year, that banker's going to be very reluctant to give you any kind of credit. So crop insurance basically allows farmers to stay in business, recognizing that they often have no control, no control over what impacts their ability to produce a crop, but from a weather standpoint. Then if you have somebody do something in another country that affects the market, say tomorrow China decided, you know what? We're irritated at the United States over Syria. And you know, the way we're going to express irritations, we're going to stop buying American soybeans. What do you think that would do to the soybean market? It would go down rather dramatically because China purchases nearly 40% of all our soybeans. No control over that, farmer has no control over that. Price dips, they're stuck, banker says, sorry, no credit. So that's another way in which we provide help and assistance. The fourth way that we've been providing help and assistance is through a thing called direct payments, in which certain types of farmers, corn, soybeans, cotton, rice, wheat, receive checks from the government as a way of additional support. It's this last way that is most problematic for people who are not farmers. They kind of understand crop insurance, they understand research, you know, they understand markets and buying surpluses and maintaining strong markets. They understand those things because they get, they don't get a farmer getting a check in the mail when corn's selling for eight bucks a bushel or soybeans are selling for 15 bucks a bushel. They don't, that doesn't compute. So there's an effort now to reduce and eliminate direct payments and to replace it with a program that says, instead of sending you a check every year, even in the good years, we're actually going to provide you help when you're really in those tough years. Because crop insurance doesn't pay for everything. You know, you can buy crop insurance up to a certain percentage of your loss, but you can't cover the entire loss with crop insurance. So we're going to help with an additional program that will be on top of crop insurance. And we're going to give farmers and producers options whether they want to protect their whole farm operation or a specific crop, whether they want to protect yield or they want to protect price or both. We're going to create a structure that helps them when they need it, but only when they need it. I think if we had that kind of support system, we'd continue to have the strongest agriculture in the world, we'd continue to see agricultural productivity increase, and we'd continue to be able to export and support the job to be a food security nation. If we don't have those kinds of programs, then only the very largest, very, 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 very largest could survive. And it would be very difficult for the smaller-sized operators, the folks who make up the vast majority of producers here in the United States, to survive. And I think we'd get to a point where, you know, we'd have a handful of farmers and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the access to food we have in this country today, nor would we have the affordability of food. And that's the last point I'll make on this. You know, folks, when we leave the Hy-Vee here or the grocery store anywhere in the United States, we spend, as on average, we spend about 6% to 10% of our paychecks for food. Now, I know it seems like a little bit more than that, Tom, but that's all it is, 6% to 10%. If you were in any other country, you'd be spending 25% of your paycheck, you'd be spending 50% of your paycheck for food. So because you have more flexibility, you have 10% to 15% more of your paycheck when you leave the grocery store than anybody else in the world, you can go down and you can buy a new car at a Ford dealership, for example, if you would be of mind to do that down in Hammond. Or you can, you know what, maybe even buy a steam engine and have it displayed at Old Threshers and be proud of that. You have flexibility with your paycheck, brought to you by American farmers because of that support structure and system. That's why it's important to get a farm bill done. Because right now, farmers don't know what that system's going to be, bankers don't know what that system's going to be, shoot, John Whitaker doesn't know what that system's going to be. And because of that, there's uncertainty. And so people are scaling back, they're holding back, they're not as confident about the future. And that makes it less likely that we're going to grow and continue to be productive.
Hi, my name is Deborah Whitaker. Kind of ironic with Mr. Whitaker, but I came from, I kill cut today, and I just wanted to know what you have.
I can hear you and I'll repeat the question.
Okay, what you can have in line for, in our veterans here today. I'm a military mom of three, and I lost one a year ago in an accident. But I have a garden project that I'm going on with a lot of his battle buddies. And these guys, they love it. And what do you see in the future as far as helping out in anything in that way for gardening or agriculture?
We've had a lot of brave men and women serve us over in the military. And I, my heart goes out to you, Ms. Whitaker, for the loss of your son and for the loss of all those sons and daughters, either in the war or when they came back after the war. We owe an obligation to these kids to make sure that when they come back, they got something to come back to. And about a million of them are going to be coming back or have come back. So what we're doing in USDA, we're doing a couple of things. First of all, we are affiliating ourselves with a number of entities that are very focused on getting veterans involved in agriculture, primarily specialty crop production, because that's a little easier to get involved in than a corn or bean operation. And we are providing assistance and help through a program called the Beginning Farmers and Rancher Program. It provides assistance and help to these organizations that then sit down with veterans and say, would you consider getting into the business of farming? What would you like to grow? Where would you like to grow it? Who would you sell it to? What would you need to get it done? And where would you go to get the capital to do it? And they basically help these guys develop a business plan so they determine whether or not this is feasible or not. Here's why this is important, it's a really important point that Ms. Whitaker makes. These veterans, some of these guys come home and, you know what, they've seen things we've never seen. There may be veterans in this room that served in the armed forces and many of you may have served in war zones, so you understand, but I don't. I've got a nephew over now in the Marine Corps and he got back from Afghanistan late last year. He's seen things that I'll never see. It impacts and affects these kids. And we have found there's a direct way of assisting these young folks to make the transition back from battle to secure life here by working the land. So we want to help them. So we create the resources to have these programs create business plans. And then they can go to John Whitaker with a John Whitaker in any state in the country. And they can say, we need $20,000 to buy a used piece of machinery, or we need $15,000 to rent a couple acres of land and buy some seed. John's got the microloan program. You don't have to have a lot of experience to get that program like a lot of his other programs. So he would line those soldiers up with a microloan and then they'd be in business. Then we say to them, look, you got to sell this someplace, so we're going to get you hooked up and really get you linked to a... So he would line those soldiers up with a microloan, and then they'd be in business. Then we say to them, "Look, you gotta sell this someplace. So we're gonna get you hooked up and really get you linked to a farmer's market that may be in your area." We've seen a rapid expansion of farmer's markets under this administration, about 8,200 now in the country. We have a thing called Know Your Farmer Compass. It's on our website. It's about 50 pages of information about how you might get started in a local and regional food system effort. And we make all of that information available. So we provide business planning assistance, we provide credit assistance, and we provide market assistance. And that's just the United States Department of Agriculture. We also make it a priority of ours. When John Whittaker has an opening in his shop at FSA, where I have an opening in my office, in the Secretary's office, we give veterans preference in employment. In fact, where's Lanon? Lanon Bakam is actually a kid from Mount Pleasant, served in Afghanistan. And he's my, he's in charge of my scheduling operation. He's a veteran, 13 months over in Afghanistan. He's the kind of person we're hiring. And we're not hiring him just because it's the right thing to do. It's a good thing to do. We're, we're hiring these kids because they come out of the military as problem solvers. And they have a way of thinking and a discipline that really makes a difference in terms of providing help and assistance at USDA. So 25% of our new hires have been veterans in the last couple of years.
Mr. Secretary, my name is Debbie Schmidt. I'm just retired from a social services agency in northeastern Indiana where we served low-income families and many poor people. We've seen great strides in the food stamp program over the years, and particularly under this administration, of expanding some of the eligibility for food stamps. Going to EBT cards has been a great step, I think, for individuals receiving food stamps. But we also witnessed a lot of fraud in the food stamp program. Has there ever been any thought about putting the individual person's picture ID on the EBT card? And the reason I say that is because many individuals will sell those food stamps for cash, give it to a friend so they can buy other things, and then it's not used for the appropriate person, family, or reason. Just a thought, if Department of Agriculture has ever considered that.
We've been very, very concerned about this issue of fraud and mistakes in this, in all programs. And I'm proud to say, despite the fact that there are obviously incidences that occur, that the fraud rate in the SNAP program is just a little bit above 1%. It's at its historic low in the last five years. And that's because we've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort to try to reduce fraud. It's actually about three times or four times less than the fraud rate in the crop insurance program, for example. Are they ever hear anybody expressing concerns about that? Here's what we've done. We haven't, we haven't thought about putting a picture on there. But here's what we know about fraud. A good deal of it occurs in these smaller convenience store-sized operations, not in the large grocery stores. So we're looking at ways in which we can assure that where the EBT card is used are stores that have the capability and the understanding of what those fraudulent incidences look like. People buying, I was actually speaking to the CEO of Hy-Vee yesterday. And he told me he was in a store one day, one of the stores one day, and he saw a fellow with a card and it was just filled with milk. That's all he had. It was like, I don't know, 15 gallons of milk. Who drinks 15 gallons of milk? What he was doing was he's doing, he buys the milk, they dump the milk, they come back with the bottles, and they redeem the bottles for cash. Well, that's not what the SNAP program's about. So basically, they've stopped that purchase from taking place because they have the awareness of that kind of activity. So we are looking first and foremost about who is able to use the SNAP program. And secondly, one of the most recent incidences of fraud are these folks who basically say, "Oh, golly, I lost my card." Well, you know, having lost a card or two in my day, I get that. But I don't quite get it when it's six or eight times a year. So now what we're doing in North, we started this in North Carolina with great success. After like the second or third card that's lost, we send them a letter. Now, you say, "What send a letter?" We send them a letter saying, "You know, by the way, that's against the law if you're selling your card. And we're gonna prosecute you." That has stopped that process dead in its tracks. That's the second thing. The third thing we're doing is we're focusing attention on states. You see, states administer, so you won't know, states administer these programs. It's not the federal government. The federal government gives money to the states and states administer a program. So we're keeping track of states that do a good job and states that don't do a particularly good job. And we're forcing the states that aren't doing a good job to do a better job. So the, so we are focused on this issue and, and we're gonna continue to be focused on it. And we're gonna be looking at a series of reforms that we'll be announcing here fairly soon, and we've already announced. We did, we did over 700,000 investigations last year. Over 40,000 individuals lost their right to participate in the program because of these investigations. And roughly 1,400 stores lost their ability to participate in the SNAP program, which is a big money loser for them. So we are, we're ratcheting down and we're focused on this, and we want, we'll continue to focus on it. But I don't know that we've gone to the point of actually requiring a photo. That gets into a, a lot of interesting and more complicated issues at a great deal of expense.
Yeah, I'm Booz Newmeyer from Lynn County. But my concern, not so much fraud, it's just the ease of getting these SNAP cards. On our mobile radio station, they aired an interview with a guy from California, a 29-year-old surfer. And maybe you've heard that. And he said, "I don't have to work. I get my SNAP card." And they said, "Well, how do you get that?" And he said, "Well, I just go, 'Oh, I'm not working,' so I get the card." And he only has to renew it every year. And they said, "Well, what, what are you eating with your SNAP card?" Well, this week, we had Eo, oh, lobster was on sale. So he's out there eating lobster and all of the goodies. Doesn't have to work. Somewhere or another, that part of it needs to be somewhat under control. I don't know how you're gonna do it.
Well, that's a great, I'm really glad you brought that up. Because it gives me a chance to explain who's getting SNAP and who isn't and to try to respond to your question. First of all, let's break down who's getting SNAP. 92% of the SNAP beneficiaries, 92% of the folks getting SNAP are one of four folks. They're a senior citizen, has worked all their life, but they're living on a small social security check. A person with a serious disability that probably can't work. Children, or folks who are actually in the workforce. Actually, they're working. They're working a part-time job or they're working a full-time job at minimum wage. They just, they're having a hard time, but they're playing by the rules and they're working hard. That's 92% of all the people involved in SNAP. So what we're focused on, and the man, the gentleman that you alluded to, is from a documentary that was done by Fox News, some of which was accurate and some of which wasn't. We're talking about 8% of the overall population of SNAP. There is a work requirement associated with SNAP. And if you're able-bodied, you are supposed to only be able to get SNAP, and you correct me if I'm wrong about this, three months out of a three-year period. So you can only get it for three months out of a three-year period if you're able-bodied, unless, unless your state, not the federal government, unless your state decides to waive that requirement. And states waived that requirement during the heart of the recession when we had 10, 11, 12% unemployment because there were a lot of people that needed help. So one thing to address your concerns are, is to have states be a little bit more vigilant on that work requirement and to get back to the law that says, "You get a little help, but you only get it for a short period of time." That's number one. Number two, I think the states could do a better job of actually getting those able-bodied folks working opportunities. Because now, it's the state, all right? So we'll take Iowa, for example. The state of Iowa's Human Services Department knows precisely who's getting the SNAP card. They have a name, they have an address, they understand the circumstances of the family. They know, for example, that John Whittaker is able-bodied and he's unemployed, and they know where he lives. The Iowa Workforce Development Office, office over here, knows that Hy-Vee's looking for checkout people and produce guys in their new store in Acne. John lives in, in Urbendale. They say to John, "Hey, we got this job opportunity over here." If they talk to each other, then they could say to John, "Here's an opportunity for you to be employed." And maybe you wouldn't need SNAP, or maybe you wouldn't need as much. So I think one of the things we need to be doing is we need to do a better job of making states coordinate between workforce development and, and the SNAP, SNAP beneficiaries. That would put a few more folks to work. On the issue of what they buy with SNAP, that's a trickier issue, and here's why. There are over 300,000 items that are sold in grocery stores around the United States. And roughly 12,000 to 14,000 new items are introduced every single year. So the first issue is, even as good as technology is, it's really, really difficult to structure that EBT card that it understands the difference between certain types of food. I'll give you an example. Let's say you decided that you didn't want people to eat anything with, that was bad for them and that, that, you know, that had lots of sugar and lots of salt and things like that. So somehow, you could figure the EPT card. You're going down the aisle and you see shredded wheat. How many people eat shredded wheat with nothing on it? No sugar, no fruit, just plain shredded wheat. Yeah, I didn't think so. Yeah, okay, one or two people. It's hard to eat that. So the makers of shredded wheat put sugar on it. And more of us eat that. And then people started getting concerned about sugar, so they reduced the sugar. So if you're going down the line and you ask yourself now, "Which is better for me? The fully sugared shredded wheat or the reduced sugared shredded wheat?" I would've said the reduced sugared shredded wheat. But I would've been wrong. Because when they reduce the sugar, they jacked up the sodium and the salt content. So now it's actually worse for you than the sugar shredded wheat. You're gonna ask an EPT card to understand the difference between those products. That's very difficult to do. And then finally, if you got an 18- or 19-year-old checkout person and they're checking stuff out, and you got 14 people in the line, and you got a person with a dad with two kids who aren't necessarily mining their p's and q's at the grocery store because they're bored, and you're going through the line, all of a sudden you have to say, "I'm sorry, sir, you can't buy that with that card." And he gets upset. What are you gonna do? And so say the kid goes, "Okay, you know, we're just gonna get you out of here." Well, that's a violation. You're gonna, you're gonna put the kid in jail, you're gonna shut down the grocery store, you're gonna... I mean, it's hard. It's very, very hard. A better way is to incent, in which what we're doing now is we just finished a study that shows that if you incent people, they make the right set of choices. So we're creating ways in which they can stretch the EPT card with fruits and vegetable purchases rather than lobster, for example. So we are trying to address that issue, and we're trying to do it in a way that creates fewer problems, not more problems. Any questions? Well, if there are no more questions, just let me finish by saying, I appreciate you all being here today. Appreciate the questions, and I'll stick around for a few minutes before I get back to my grandkids and children who are no doubt spending money somewhere, which is what Len is wants to happen. But it's great to be back home and it's, it's great to be here at the Old Thresher's. So thank you all very much.